Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, as it states for her air, to the [inaudible]. This is one of the three judges.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Delacqua.
Yeah.
Assistant Director Vladicero.
Here.
Councilman at Large Krenick.
Here.
Councilman at Large Traffus.
Here.
Board One Councilman Biassiata.
Here.
Board Two Councilman Frondor.
Here.
Board Three Councilman Kukrow.
Here.
Board Four Councilman Petro.
Here.
Director Public Service and Properties Labiche.
Here.
Building Commissioner Morrow.
Okay, we will begin with the reading and disposal of the journal. We will have the minutes of the regular council meeting held June 27, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
Having read the council minutes of the council meeting dated June 27, 2016, I find no errors or omissions, and therefore, I move that they be approved as printed.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Minutes from the regular council meeting held June 27, 2016 have passed. Moving on to the minutes of the special council meeting held July 5, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
Again, having read the council minutes of the special council meeting held July 5, I find no errors or omissions, and therefore, I move that they be approved as printed.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes. The meeting minutes for the special council meeting held July 5, 2016 have passed. We will now move on to the consent agenda dated July 11, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
If there's no division of the question, I move that we accept the consent agenda dated July 11, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes. Consent agenda dated July 11, 2016 has been passed. Do we have any resolutions of commendation?
There are none tonight.
Okay, reports of committees. The Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee last met on July 20th, on June 20th, and our next meeting will be on July 18th. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, we met on, I forget the date. No, last, last one, June 16th. I don't know what was the last meeting.
Last week.
Yeah, we met on the, on the 5th. Yeah, we met on the 5th, and the minutes are on file with the clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. We do not have a community services chairman yet, so we'll move on to the Police and Safety Committee, Councilman Krenick.
Yes, the Police, Fire, and Safety Committees' next committee meeting is scheduled for July 18.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukrow.
Yes, our last meeting's meeting minutes are forthcoming, and our next meeting is on July 18.
Thank you, Councilman. Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics, Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was on July 5. Those meetings are pending, those minutes are pending, and our next meeting is on August 1st.
Thank you. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel.
Yes.
Councilman Frondor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was held on July 5. Our next meeting will be held on July 18. The minutes are on, I'm happy to report the minutes are on file with the council clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving on to appointments and confirmations. As everyone is aware, a few weeks ago, Councilman at Large Mike Barth resigned due to moving out of Seven Hills, and over the past few weeks, we have been accepting resumes from our residents, and over the course of a couple of weeks, we had some meetings and conducted interviews, and I'm very pleased that we decided on a candidate, and he is in the audience today. He's a long-term resident, Edward Bicker, and I am going to make a motion to nominate Edward Bicker to fill the vacant position of Councilman at Large for the remainder of the term ending December 9, 2017.
Second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Councilman Kukrow.
Yeah, thank you. One of the things I liked about when Edward was, he didn't miss a day of work in how many years, Edward?
Twenty-five years and seven months.
So buckle in, because there's a lot of days of work ahead of you here. I know you're retired now, but semi-retired, but congratulations.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes. Edward Bicker has been appointed to Councilman at Large, and if Assistant Law Director Pat Dicchio will join me to administer the oath of office.
You may raise your right hand and be angry. I, Edward S. Bicker.
I, Edward S. Bicker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Charter, ordinances, and resolutions of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge the duties of the office.
And impartially.
Discharge.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Council at Large.
Of Council at Large.
For the City of Seven Hills.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio. During my continuance and set office.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna do this.
Did you fuck Obama?
Yeah, I know, that's what I felt like.
Your mic's out.
It's good.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say what a privilege it is to be an elected representative for the great city of Seven Hills. It's like a dream for me. I retired recently, semi-retired, as a lot of you know, and I have a lot more time on my hands now, and I was actually looking for part-time work of some sort, and then when the position came up, it just was like something fell in my lap. I have run for council before, and unfortunately, I had to go to school, get my master's degree, six years, so I couldn't rerun, so anyways, I'm back full cycle. If you have any questions at all, you'll see my contact information on the site. Anytime, send me an email, call my cell phone, if I can help you, I will. And I just want to say my responsibility to you is twofold. Keep great services and balance the budget, and I'm gonna work as hard as I can for that. I am fiscally conservative, as anybody who knows me knows that, and I think I can help us balance the budget and not lose any of our great services. And again, thank you all for being here, and I want to thank all the council for putting me in. I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to working with the guys. Going forward, ironically, I think there will be less bickering at City Hall.
How many, how many years you been waiting for that? I think I just heard a campaign slogan.
Well, welcome aboard, Eddie, and I think during our miscellaneous, we might have a couple of things to say.
Okay.
So, all right. Oh, and moving forward with the agenda, Ed, if there is something that you may not be sure about, it's okay to recuse yourself, but I know you've been studying the agenda this weekend, and you're up to date on everything. Okay, are there any communications, petitions, and claims?
There are none.
Okay. Council will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If there's anything on tonight's agenda that you wish to be heard about, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Is anybody in the first row? Second row?
I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda. Is there any? Box number 12.
There is not. You're welcome. Anybody else in the second row, third row, fourth row, fifth row? Okay. We will begin with our ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 70, 2016.
Councilperson.
Councilman Krenick.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance number 70-2016 by title only for its third and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 70, 2016, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Barth, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Cogga County District Board of Health for the purpose of monitoring and testing MS4 outfall locations as required by the city's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit for stormwater and appropriating funds not to exceed $3,711 for said service for the year 2016, report period.
Ordinance number 70, 2016, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Krenick.
I move that we pass ordinance number 70, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 70, 2016, has been passed, and congratulations, Ed, you just made your first vote on pollution. All right, ordinance number 71, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance number 71-2016 for its third and final reading by title only.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 71, 2016, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Barth, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Toshiba Business Solutions of Akron, Ohio, for the semi-annual maintenance and support contract for the E Studio 2330 CUSN black color multifunction unit in the engineering department and appropriating a sum not to exceed $474.36 every six months for the life of the machine for said service.
Ordinance number 71, 2016, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we pass ordinance 71-2016.
I second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? And, okay, please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 71, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance number 72, 2016, for its final, or for its third, third, and final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. Jim.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 72, 2016, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Barth, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Extend Technologies of Broadview Heights, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $1,584, to assess the entire city of Seven Hills municipal building network and to create a network map showing locations, equipment, and IP addresses to provide easier network management and overview.
Ordinance number 72, 2016, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we pass ordinance number 70, 2016.
All right. I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
No.
Frondor.
No.
Krenick.
No.
Kukrow.
No.
Petro.
No.
Traffus.
No.
Bicker.
No.
Ordinance number 72, 2016, has been defeated. Moving on to ordinance number 73, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Krenick.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance number 73, 2016, by title only for its third and final reading.
I will second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 73, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Barth, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an affiliation agreement for job training experiential learning program on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, and the Parma City School District Board of Education of Parma, Ohio, for the purpose of providing practical, community-based work experience for the educational benefit of the students in a natural work environment at the Seven Hills City Administration Building.
Ordinance number 73, 2016, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Krenick.
I move that we pass ordinance number 73, 2016.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 73, 2016, has been passed. We will now have the second reading of amended ordinance number 77, 2016.
Amended ordinance number 77, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an economic development, job creation, and job retention agreement with Blue Chip Consulting Group, LLC.
Amended ordinance number 77, 2016, has been read for its second reading. We will now have the second reading of ordinance number 81, 2016.
Ordinance number 81, 2016, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with R&amp;K Technologies Incorporated of North Ridgeville, Ohio, for full service maintenance on the Xerox 8825 HP DJ 500 plotter located in the engineering department of the city of Seven Hills, and appropriating a sum not to exceed monthly base rate of $246.74 plus a monthly usage charge of .095 a square foot for the 12-month term of the agreement.
Ordinance number 81, 2016, has been read for its second reading. We will now have the second reading of amended ordinance number 82, 2016.
Amended ordinance number 82, 2016, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance to amend section 159.01 court costs of chapter 159 mayor's court as contained in title 7 judicial of Part 1 Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of increasing the court costs for all violations occurring in the jurisdictional limits of the city of Seven Hills, with the exception of parking, pedestrian, and seatbelt violations.
Amended ordinance number 82, 2016, has been read for its second reading. We will now move on to ordinance number 83, 2016.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspends the rules and reads ordinance 83, 2016, by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 83, 2016, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Barth, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Great Detours of Cleveland, Ohio, to provide transportation for a bus trip to the Nautica Queen Cruise and Jack Casino, Cleveland, Ohio, on July 28, 2016, authorizing an amount not to exceed $3,000 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 83, 2016, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council passes ordinance 83, 2016. By title only for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 84, 2016, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Air Force One Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the purpose of performing annual preventative maintenance on the three rooftop units at City Hall in an amount not to exceed $554 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 84, 2016, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we pass ordinance number 84, 2016.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 84, 2016, has been passed. Moving on to ordinance number 85, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we amend ordinance number 85, 2016, all right, I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and amend ordinance.
Just add the emergency.
I move, I move that we amend ordinance 85, 2016, by adding an emergency clause.
Second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amendment ordinance number 85, 2016, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Westland Heating and Air Conditioning of Westlake, Ohio, for the purpose of replacing and installing one new A.O. Smith 100-gallon standard commercial hot water tank at the city of Seven Hills Community Recreation Center in an amount not to exceed $9,500 for said service.
Amended ordinance number 85, 2016, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we pass amendment ordinance number 85, 2016.
Second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krenick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amendment ordinance number 85, 2016, has been passed. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 86, 2016.
Ordinance 86, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Krenick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the cities of North Walton, Independence, Brexville, and Broadview Heights, RIBS Southwest Collaborative, for the administration of funds awarded through its 2016 Senior Center Innovation Grant through the Cogga County Department Grant through the Cuyahoga County Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Senior and Adult Services.
Ordinance number eighty-six, two thousand sixteen, has been read for its first reading. Moving on to ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspend the rules under the charter and reads ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand sixteen, by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand sixteen, introduced by councilpersons Traffus, Frondorf, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Set and Stone Contracting LLC of Valley City, Ohio, and appropriating an amount not to exceed eleven thousand three hundred dollars for the two thousand sixteen Catch Basin Reconstruction Project throughout the city of Seven Hills and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand sixteen, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council passes ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that, Mr. President. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand sixteen, has been passed. Amended resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand sixteen, by title only for its third and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondorf, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro. A resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing tax levy, providing funds for the payment of permanent and part-time firefighters, including the payment of firefighter employers' contribution required under section seven forty-two point three four of the revised code, and the provision of ambulance, paramedic, and other emergency medical services operated by the city's fire department pursuant to sections five seven oh-five point oh-three and point one-nine I of the revised code.
Amended resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand sixteen, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I would move that we adopt amended resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand sixteen, has been adopted. Moving on to amended resolution number forty-two, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance number forty-two, two thousand sixteen, for its final reading and declaring an emergency.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended resolution number forty-two, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and councilpersons Traffus, Frondorf, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro. A resolution approving the proposed alternative tax budget for the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen and declaring an emergency.
Amended resolution number forty-two, two thousand sixteen, has been read for its second and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we pass or adopt amended resolution number forty-two, two thousand sixteen.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended resolution number forty-two, two thousand sixteen, has been adopted. Okay, council will now be open to the audience. If you have any comments you would like to make, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Is there anybody in the first row? Anybody in the second row?
I just had some more questions from last time I was here. So, on this PUD thing, it's gonna...this is how it is, and it's gonna go for...to the planning committee?
Correct. There is going to be a planning commission meeting this Wednesday at eight o'clock.
Okay, so, everything is gonna be thirty-five feet in height, is that correct?
Nothing is set in stone yet. This ordinance is going to the planning commission for them to review and possibly make recommendations to city council.
Okay. I am concerned about, um, lack of information about the size of the townhomes that are going to be built, and what the retail of those would be, um, and the developers have not produced any of that information, is that correct?
The last part, I did not hear what you said.
The developers have not produced any of that information, is that correct?
I believe it's still premature for anybody to produce that. We...what we're doing right now is establishing the planned unit development. Once we have that passed, that dictates to the developer what they can or cannot do.
Okay. So, you're gonna have a very specific plan of the size of the townhomes?
Absolutely.
From the developer.
Absolutely.
Okay, how about the traffic report? When will the people be able to see the results of the traffic report that was paid by the developers, which seems a little funny to me?
Okay, well, I, um, spoke with him after you were here a couple of weeks ago, and they are a few weeks away from completing that. And once they do, it'll be provided to the city, which in turn will be provided to our residents upon request.
Okay. I had a question about the...about the, um, apartments that are above the retail. Was there discussion of how many apartments there are gonna be? Or that's not planned yet?
The last figure I heard, I believe it was at the Rockside Holiday Inn presentation, was between a hundred and a hundred and fifty.
Apartments.
But again, I'm gonna reiterate that nothing is set in stone yet.
Above, how...is there discussion of how tall that's gonna be? I mean, seems like a hundred apartments, and it's not a log space.
It could be a five-story building. It could be a twenty-story building. Nothing is set in stone yet. Again, this planned unit of...planned unit development ordinance will dictate what the developer can and cannot do. And these are very legitimate questions that many of us have concerns about as well, but we're not prepared to give you solid answers to it yet.
Okay. And when...when do you expect this, um, PUD information to be finalized by the city?
I don't...I don't...this year, I don't know how long the planning commission will have this. Um, I'm hoping that they turn over their recommendations to council early August.
Okay. And of course, I, um, am very concerned about the street that's going in on Crossview Road, because it seems like a huge safety issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody further in the second row? Third row? Fourth row?
Ed Maslowski, ten thirty-five, Joy Oval. I've been asking for a source study for a long time, and, uh, Matt, you promised us faithfully that we would have a source study. Haven't seen it yet, though, uh, Tony has made arrangements with...with...for me to meet with Mr. Collins, and also I'll reserve my...
With who? I couldn't hear.
Uh, Mr. Collins.
The engineer, okay.
Yes, so I'll reserve my comments till...till after that, but what I'm seeing in the development, I do have a lot of concerns. The, uh, statement was made that it's the same as...same as John Glenn School. The houses are much bigger than I ever...my original estimate was...was that the, uh, stormwater entering footing drains would be nearly double what was...what was from John Glenn, just based on roof areas. From what I'm seeing that they're actually building, that's a low number. It's much higher. The, uh, drainage from the footing drains can be a major problem for sewer overflow. So, there's a lot of potential problems, but while I was there, took a look at the retention bas...detention basin, that hole in the ground. The design of that, as far as I can see, I'm gonna bring this up with engineer, the design of that, as far as I can see, was...was based on how little area Simich had to give up. It's tucked up right against the, um, against the, uh, city property, the playground, a playground area. There is...the slopes on that thing, I...you know, it defies imagination. This is...this is not my field, uh, of expertise. I'm not a civil engineer, but I do all degrees in physics and electrical engineering, and I can...I can read, uh, I can read the design manual for...design manuals, the Bible for design of retention basins. It just requires a simple knowledge of hydrology and, uh, partial differential equations. Not a big deal. So, at any rate, the, um, problems with...with what I was seeing there, it does look a little small. It doesn't look like...like you'll really handle the storm...storm water. The slope on the sides are well below what's recommended. Recommendations are three to one, vertical to height. That's...that's a minimum type of recommendation for...for safety purposes and stability. Um, this one is...this one is...I doubt if it's two to one. It's closer...it's somewhere between two to one and one to one. Terrible slopes, very unstable. There is absolutely no trash rack. There's an outlet pipe that's a bare outlet pipe, no trash rack. Systems of this size don't need to be, uh, don't need an ODNR permit, but I can guarantee you, if it were, if it would require a permit, it wouldn't get it. ODNR does require trash racks. Trash racks are a major safety concern. A bare pipe like this, and this incidentally is...is next to the playground. The recommendations I've been reading is...is...just in residential areas, but a playground, I go up there and I say, "It's dry right now. Kids are playing in it right now." It...number one, it absolutely positively requires a fence. The fence is gonna be...is so close to city property, the fence would have to be partially on city property. It's gonna be a hell of a mess to make a fence, because there's a difference in elevation between one bank and the other. It's designed so that if there's any flow, it would not flow into their property, but it would flow onto Joy Oval. Looking at that thing, what I can't understand, I...I know that...I've been kinda sloughing off Tom Jarasworth when he was recommending underground, but an underground detention basin is really the only thing that should have been put there. I look at this thing, and I cannot possibly imagine how they can sell that house that fronts this...this hole in the ground, particularly when it has to be properly accommodated with a fence. I really don't understand. I have...I...I...it would need a hell of a con man salesman to do this. They may have been encouraged by the...by the fact that they were able to convince the global planning commission and city council to give them a hundred and twenty-one variances to build this thing.
Mr. Maslowski, everything you're saying, I agree with. And if you take yourself back a year or so, when, uh, frankly, the previous city council voted on this, those are the exact same concerns that Councilman Frondorf and I expressed, and if you recall, he and I voted against it. At this point, now that a city council has approved what they approved, it's out of our hands. There's nothing city council can do at this point. Now it's administrative and possibly legal. And I'm sorry, I'm sure that's not the answer that you want, but that's the facts. And frankly, one of the reasons we based our no votes on this project is because we wanted that underground detention basin, and I'm sure it's in the meeting minutes to back that up. Do you want to add anything, Tim?
No, other than to say, you know, there...to my left, everybody you see on this dais, this is their first term. To my right, it was Matt and I that voted against it.
Well, the way...
Please, one last thing. There were...there were a list of at least ten conditions that the planning commission...planning commission forwarded to council, and I said no, because unless those conditions were met, I could not vote for that, for the passage of that. Unfortunately, that was passed five to two.
Well, you've got a mess on your hands. And don't...and don't believe that the, uh, the city can't...can hide behind, uh, behind immunity. Government agencies have been successfully sued. This...this, plain and simple, what I saw is a death trap for children. An absolute death trap. It's...it's not even a good design.
We agree with you. We agree with you, but there's not a thing city council can do. That development was approved by the planning commission.
They never approved it.
I agree, and that's why Tim and I voted no on that. But city council, at that time, approved it. Period. I wish we could change it, but the projects ago. It's...there's nothing city council can do. I don't know if there's anything the administration can do or the law department, but it's over with city council. Our hands are tied, because it was approved last year. I wish I could help you. I agree with what you're saying. I was railing against it last year, and I was criticized for it, but it was the right thing to do. We were in agreement, Mr. Maslowski.
Well, it...it's the price you pay for sucking up to the developer.
We agree.
Okay. Uh, while I was there, I also noted one thing, that the tennis courts were chopped off. When were those tennis courts installed?
I don't know when they were installed, but, uh, I'm sure the service director can give us an update on the new fencing.
I got one quote, uh, I'm gonna have to...it's over the threshold.
I know Bob Leach could tell me.
I'd have to get other quotes.
It seems that...seems to me that it was more than seventeen years ago, and, uh, you know what I'm talking about, uh, there. The developers should have never been allowed to, uh, to chop those tennis courts.
Mr. Maslowski, we are in complete agreement. We were railing against this development last year, and that's what happens with the previous city council. There's nothing I can do about this, or this council.
We were holding all the cards. The city...the city has a full house, and developer has a...
The city elected their representatives, and that's what they chose.
We're paying a lot of money for legal advice, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. Yes, I do. Okay, well, that's...that's...that's all I can say, but I am really disturbed about the, uh, the safety of that detention. I know...I know Tom has been railing about this, Tom Jaras, and I've kinda sloughing him off, because he has...he does complain a lot, but he was...he has been one hundred percent correct.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry I didn't look at this...look into this sooner.
Thank you. Is anybody further? Mr. Raymond.
Jerry Raymond, one zero four four, Joy Oval. Uh, with regards to, uh, ordinance eight-five-two-zero-one-six, I'm hoping I'm looking at typos here. It relates to the purchase and installation of a one-hundred-gallon standard commercial hot water tank. You know where I'm coming from, Ms. Louise?
Yes.
Nine thousand five hundred dollars? That's inconceivable. Educate us.
Okay, um, we got three...I got three quotes, three independent quotes, three contractors. The tank itself, in fact, one of the general one even looked it up, it's something...just the tank itself is about sixty-five hundred dollars, thereabouts. You got installation, uh, two valves, uh, three valves have to be installed to make it...be able to isolate. What we have in the rec center is three tanks, three identical tanks. I replace...I'm replacing it in kind. Uh, it's a little more than a hot water tank like in a house.
So, it's just not a simple replacement, is that what you're suggesting?
It's a...it is a replacement.
There's more to it, the new valve, et cetera, et cetera.
There's other incidental work besides the tank, and that commercial-type tank is not something you get for residential. I mean, a typical residential tank is thirty-five thousand BTUs.
Yes.
This thing is running at a hundred fifty thousand BTUs. It's a very high recovery rate, because you have a lot of demand, you have a lot of fixture units in the rec center, a lot of showers and things like that. And, um, it also has a heat pump that makes it more energy efficient, so it's a very energy-efficient, as do the original ones. It's nothing, uh, you know, expensive or fancy, I should say. It's nothing more fancy than what we have, so it's been competitively bid out, and in fact, the prices were very close. The contractors sought the, you know, similar way. So, I mean, that's...that's what they cost. It's pricey.[1683.12] It's pricey. I'm glad people are asking questions. I mean, it is pricey, but-
I love asking questions.
What's that?
I love asking questions, especially in this council.
But it's something necessary, you know. One is down, there's three of them, like I said, one is down, and a matter of time before the other two go. And they're all manufactured in 2002, original equipment, so, you know, after 14 years, it needs a new tank.
What you just stated makes sense. I understand. I'm sure others knew better also. So, thank you. Just for grants, what was the high bid?
A little over 10,000.
Okay.
10,000 and change. They were very close. In fact, they even got a contractor that is new to the city to bid on it too, to get a little new blood in there. So, I mean, I knew it'd be expensive, but, you know, it is what it is, as they say.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Is there any further comment? Mr. Lahatt.
Good evening. Michael Haff, 1038 Joy Oval. I agree with Mr. Maslowski, with his deal is with the detention. I understand where you two come from, because you are not part of it, but my God, somebody has to be held accountable for this. The developer jammed this down our throats, and this guy continues to get everything he wants in this city. Maybe some time later, this developer should be held to task on this and say, well, we're going to hold back on you until you stop the nonsense, correct the problems you've done. I'm hearing stuff about this playground over there, that he donated $80,000. Where? The place is a dump. There's moss on that, those kids play basketball on that tennis court, they're slipping on the moss. I mean, it's, I just don't understand it. Somebody has to be held to task for this. So, I want to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Yes, ma'am.
So, when you have these complaints, can we officially, as the residents, ask for you to talk to the lawyers and talk to administration to look at it, officially look at it?
Absolutely. These items can be discussed next week in our caucus meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody further? Bob Leach, Councilman Bob. God bless.
Good evening, Councilman Bob. Retired. Sorry for the outfit that I have, working empire tonight. Long game. Anyhow, in a small street like I have on Rockhaven, I called the service director, and he dutifully did his job and sent me a note, which I anticipated the results would be, but on my street, there's just 22 houses, and they're getting older, of course, and I was going to repair my driveway and also my sidewalk, and I have, and the neighbor two doors down, have the only sidewalks in 22 houses that have dropped. And I wonder why that there is a catch basin right there. Now, being on council 26 years, I'm very familiar with sewers and sidewalks, but I'm asking formally for a moral claim. I know moral claims have been turned down in the past, but you guys do have a responsibility. The sidewalks are all perfect, except mine, right? And my neighbor's, okay? Which dropped three, four inches. And not only that, I was told by the service director, and he did his job, that I have a two-foot curb on part of my driveway, which cost $500 to cut down. It shouldn't have been there. It was built wrong. There is a suburban curb coming into my drive, and then the old curb from the street that goes to the park is right there, and it's that high, which is probably about 14 inches, and it needs to be cut down. So, we're looking at between my property and the neighbors over there, 1,500 hours in cost. I'm asking that for a moral claims. Or in your case, if it's turned down, immoral claim as such, that's what it would be, because it is immoral. There's a higher authority. I always taught everybody who came onto council, and I worked with a lot of you guys, and it's great to see you guys again, but I always did the right thing, and I always told the guys who came in, you know, just politics is one thing like that, no, but vote for what you think is right, no matter what side suggests it. And I think, Matt, you learned that when you worked with me last year, and Mr. Frandorf also. I did what I thought was right. I don't care whose idea it was, right?
Oh, yeah.
I know you're cutting the budget, you have a whole lot of problems, and you guys have done a terrific job, but you do also have a moral responsibility to do the right thing. I'd just like to reconsider it, because guess what? It is the city's responsibility. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor, could I suggest that you send the new engineers out to his house, give an assessment, and your administration come back to council with a recommendation on what to do? Whichever way you want to do it. Is that fair?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good to see you guys. Welcome.
Thank you.
I did you a favor. I didn't run for council this time, by the way. That was the good news. Congratulations.
Thanks.
I think my tongue is bleeding, Leach. Always a pleasure. God bless. No, I always enjoy having you here. All right. Anybody further in the audience? Okay. We'll move on to reports and communications from the mayor and safety director, Mayor Delacor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I want to invite and encourage everybody here to attend the special planning commission meeting, which is scheduled for 8:00 PM, I believe in this room, on Wednesday night. This will be an extremely important meeting, so critical to what will be ultimately, if anything, developed on Rockside Road. As you may be aware, we have two competing development groups, sometimes working together, sometimes not. Seven Hills does not and should not share any of the interests of either development group. We have a set of responsibilities and interests entirely separate from whatever is driving their seeking to invest in our town. Our goal should be, and I have encouraged everyone to keep their eye on the ball in this respect, our goal should be to permit only that economic development in our town which enhances our bottom line, which results in a net economic benefit to our city. To date, I have not been convinced that that is the case with respect to each of these two groups who have made these proposals to our town. The city has engaged an expert who has made a multiple number of requests and has obtained some information from one of the development groups, a little bit less from the other, to attempt to determine what projections they are making. And ma'am, you raised some questions about the price point and what's going to be built, and the ratio between commercial and residential development there. All those are absolutely critical to our determination as to whether or not what is being proposed there is in the best interests of our city and our residents and future generations in our city. I want to remind everyone, this is the last part of our town that remains for this level of development. We're talking, depending on how many backyards are ultimately subsumed into development, we're talking about 60 acres potentially, 70 acres. It's a very sizable development. It could mean so much for our town. However, if we are going to be encouraging the development of mostly residential, perhaps rental units, perhaps high-rise apartments, I personally do not feel, and I'm not yet convinced, I'm willing to look at the numbers when they're submitted to us, and perhaps they'll change my mind, but at this point, I am not convinced that that kind of development is in the best interests of the city, and you should not be convinced of that either. So, I want to encourage all of you to come to this meeting. I hope that some of the intensity that I heard about holding developers' feet to the fire is applied equally to those developers who are now approaching to develop the two largest portions that remain in our town. This is absolutely critical to our future, and it should be done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Move on to reports and directors of the directors and departments. Director of, Assistant Director of Law, Patrick DeChiro.
Yes, there is no report, but I would like to congratulate, and it's an honor to swear in, Councilman Bicker.
Thank you, sir.
I wish you the best.
Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick. Let's see. Director of Public Service and Property, Stuart Laviesse.
Yes, Mr. President, I want to congratulate Councilman Bicker too. Hey, do you want a hot water tank, or? No, just kidding. That was a joke.
I think he's in one now. Okay. All right, Council Misslanius, let's begin with the new guy, Councilman Bicker.
I don't really have nothing. It's been a great experience here tonight. I've been to a few council meetings, obviously, but it seems like, you know, you guys are easy to work with, and it seemed smooth. I was pleasantly surprised that you're, you know, I heard a lot from the audience, which was good, and you answered their questions right. I'm really looking forward to the next year and a half, because I think it's going to be a lot of fun.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Biassiatah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Few items tonight. I'm still waiting for the fun part, by the way, Councilman Bicker.
That's how I felt for four years.
But I'm hopeful. I am. Start off with a bit of sad news tonight. Late last month, Seven Hills lost a true gentleman of a resident, Mike Demchuk. He was administrator to Moose Lodge, 1744. He was a Seven Hills, was a Seven Hills resident. Short time I known him, he was a true gentleman, and I know he's done a lot for Seven Hills. Most recently, he was very involved in getting donation towards the dash cams to help the city out. So, patriotic man. So, on that note, I'd like to extend my condolences to his wife Irene, his son Peter, and all his family and friends that loved him. That's Mike Demchuk. On top of your note, want to welcome my new Councilman Bicker and his mom, Councilman A. My first impression when I met you, I said he was a guy with a good heart, and I hope I'm right, and I hope you never lose that. Just ask my mom. Move on, talk about some of the other candidates. We had two candidates for more than one, Larry Maisick, Tom Jaros. A few other candidates, Eric Zippe, Ron Jack, Tom Snidzki, Lucy McKernan, and Norman Martin. I want to thank them all for having the courage to volunteer to step forward. They're familiar with Seven Hills politics. That's why they got involved, and they wanted to make a difference, so. I thank all of them for coming and putting their name forward. Last but not least, I want to thank Bob Robel. He also put forth an application to become a councilman. Over the last six months, I've got to know him and his family. I thank them for all their service to Seven Hills. He's been one of the driving forces behind the Friends of John Glenn. He attends most of these meetings, and he speaks it a lot, and is not afraid to offer his opinion. So, thank you for all you've done, and we'll do, Bob Robel. That's all I have today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Biassiatah. Councilman Kranek.
Yes, thank you, President. Again, I'd like to welcome you, Ed.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if I'll say congratulations or condolences, that'll be up to you. We'll let you figure that out. But I hope you continue with the passion and commitment that you demonstrated when you were being interviewed. Quite impressive, and I hope that carries on, and wish you the very best.
Thank you, Councilman Kranek. Councilman Kukrow.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'd also like to thank all the candidates who came in and took the chance of getting into a leadership position. It's, it takes a lot for people to really want to be part of something like this, and can be very strenuous on yourself and your family, so thank you to all of them. But I do want to say thank, congratulations to Mr. Bicker. You know, I've owned a couple businesses my day, and I've hired, you know, 200, 300 people over my time, and I never put much into resumes, I put into show me. And when somebody walks in and they say, show me, that they haven't missed a day of work in 25 years, and that the owners of the company held them a party after they left, you know, because they cared that much about them, it meant a lot to me, and he showed that he can put the time, the effort, and the work in. And frankly, that's what this job takes. So, I'm very excited to have Ed on board and buckle in and get ready to do some work, because it's going to happen. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, I too would like to congratulate Eddie. I know that you've watched us from afar over the past 10, 12 years or so, so I know you should be able to step right into this. We're here to help. Questions? All you got to do is call. I do have one item. Congratulations, Eddie. I do have one item in regards to waiver of sewer charges. So, I'd like to make a motion for Robert J. Barnes Permanent Parcel 551-21-058, 551-21059, that the building commissioners hereby authorize to hear applications brought by the owner of the land, lot or premises situated in the city alleging that such land, lot, or premises cannot suitably be built upon because of its physical condition. If the commissioner determines that, in his opinion, such parcel cannot suitably be used to construct or install any home, building, or structure, the commissioner shall recommend to council that the sewer service or rental charge as provided in section 729.03 be waived. Upon receiving such recommendation of its members, waive such sewer, I'm sorry, upon receiving such recommendations of the commissioner, council may, by motion duly adopt and pass by not less than four of its members waive sewer service or rental charge to such parcel until such time as council determines that the parcel in question constitutes a buildable parcel.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Councilman Petro, would you mind explaining what the parcel looks like and why it's not buildable?
It's a parcel that abuts Panorama and Marin Drive, and the parcels are 20 by 40, and they're attached, so they're unbuildable. So, it's property that this gentleman owns, and he's being assessed for a sewer that can't be used or built.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion?
And by the way, Mr. Chairman, excuse me?
Go ahead.
We did get recommendations, we talked about it in our sewer committee meeting last week. We did get correspondence from Mr. Barnes and from the building commissioner. So, according to legal, the law department told us we had to read, basically, this is ordinance 729.08, in order to ratify it on the floor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Motion has passed. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Frandorf?
Yes, I'd also like to offer my congratulations to Councilman Bicker. I'm sure you'll do a fine job, and, you know, it's impressive, you know, that you worked all those years without missing a day, but the key thing that you said to this council was that you were a fiscal conservative, and more than anything, that's what the city needs right now, fiscal conservancy is, and responsibility. So, with that, you know, welcome to council. And I'd also like to thank everyone who applied and interviewed to be a member of this council. It's difficult enough to go through an interview process with a prospective employer in this case, but to do it in an open forum where the public is involved makes it a little bit that much more difficult. So, again, I thank everyone that took the time to apply and interview for our vacant position.
Thank you, Councilman Frandorf. I have a few things. We'll do the business items first. As discussed in the caucus room, there are four variance requests from the zoning board of appeals. I won't go through all the details of them again, I'll just get right into it. So, I'll make a motion to grant a variance to Gary Zazinlak of 1024 Starlight, a two-foot, one-inch variance to ordinance number 110602C, driveway construction, to allow the construction of an eight-foot, 18-inch concrete pad on the west side of the property, two feet, nine inches from the side yard property line.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traifus?
Yes. Yes. I'm used to being last.
Okay. Variance has been granted. I will now make a motion to grant a variance to Richard Crefall of 1741 Nemet Drive, a variance to ordinance 1143.08B2, parking of recreation vehicles, to allow a recreational vehicle to be parked in the driveway in front of the building, the front building line from April 1st through October 31st.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traifus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Variance has been granted. I will now make a motion to grant Josh Pannicle of 5620 Essex Drive, an 18-foot variance storage sheds to allow a 10-by-14 storage shed to be constructed on an existing cement and brick pad 28 feet from the northerly side yard property line.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Fondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukro?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traifus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes. Did it again. Variance has been granted. Uh, I will now make a final motion for John and Deborah Cisarato of 6293 Gale Drive, a two-foot, four-inch variance to ordinance number 1106.02C driveway construction to allow the replacement driveway to be two feet, six inches away from the side lot line.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Fondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukro?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traifus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Variance has been granted. Thank you, everybody, for that. Okay, um, I also want to thank all of the applicants, uh, that applied for the vacant council, council large seat. It certainly was a, a difficult decision. There are a number of very good and qualified candidates. And I, uh, very thankful that everybody came out and went through the process. Councilman Bicker, um, known you for quite some time. And I've always had a lot of respect for you. And I believe that you're going to work very hard at this job. And I do believe that you are going to be an added addition to this council that we need and will use. So like Jim said, buckle up, get ready. It's going to be a heck of a ride. And thank you for your, your service.
Thanks.
Okay. I have one last thing. I have a prepared statement that falls in line with, uh, my statement from two weeks ago. Everybody thought they were going to get out of here early, huh? Uh, I would like to address my final comments to two different groups of people. First, to our very hardworking firefighters who ensure our residents' safety in times of need. And second, to all of our residents who trust that we, as a city council, will not only ensure a safe city by finding ways to pay for those services like police and fire, but to also do whatever it takes to keep an eye on their tax dollars. On May 16th, 2016, at a council, police, and fire committee meeting, I presented a summary of fire department expense and revenues in conjunction with the upcoming expiration of the 1.7 mil tax levy, which was previously increased from 1.5 mils for the payment of firefighter salaries. At that meeting, which unfortunately was not attended by the fire department management, being the chief or the assistant chief, we discussed the importance of the fire levy being passed and alternatives and options as to increasing revenues or decreasing expenses. Amongst those discussions was the discovery that the third shift activity, the 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM shift, was about one-third of the other two shifts. Or another way of looking at it, it is four calls a week, or if cancel calls are considered, about one call every two days. Let me repeat that. The third shift has one call every two days. My presentation of the extreme necessity of a fire levy being passed included the undesired option regarding the financial effect of having less coverage on the significantly lesser activity, third shift. One person per shift equates to about $74,000 annually and was presented to illustrate the effect and to get everyone working towards solutions. Somehow, over the course of a couple of weeks, those discussions regarding the fire levy and the severe financial situation in the city is being translated into what I, and then I'm assuming the majority of council feels is a significant misinterpretation, misrepresentation, and/or possible exaggeration of what the end objective for our city is. We all need to be very clear. Everyone wants the best safety services, roads, and everything else the city can provide. The risk of significant degradation of all those in high, is high without all working towards an overall goal. So last Sunday, July 3rd, I met with our fire chief at his full-time place of employment at the Garfield Heights Fire Station to discuss all types of options and the fire levy. The discussion was extremely productive and he made a number of suggestions on how to trim the cost of wages without affecting the five-man shift theory. He also suggested that I meet with the firemen's bargaining unit. I'm thrilled to do this. And the chief contacted me this morning to set up a time to meet later this week. Needless to say, I'm a bit anxious to have this meeting due to the importance of the upcoming fire levy. Now I have a message to our firemen or anyone passionate about this issue, as I know many of you are watching this video broadcast. What you are doing with the charter change petition and beginning a shadow campaign on Facebook is not helping the city or the fire department. The fire department renewal levy and the income tax levy is going to be hard enough to pass. Add to this the fact that the school district is also on the ballot for a renewal, which makes matters even more difficult. A camp, a campaign of this nature from the fire department may inevitably cause one or both of these ballot issues to fail. If either of these fail, it is inevitable that both police and fire will face drastic cuts due to a complete lack of money. Obviously, nobody wants this to happen. My request to you, the fire department, is that we work together to get these issues passed. As a side note, any changes that could be made will not take effect until sometime in 2017. Now, as far as decreasing the staffing to three or four men on the late night shift, please understand, it is simply a topic of discussion. No more, no less. We simply need to work together to reduce expenses in the fire department to an acceptable amount that is similar to other department reductions at City Hall. If we can do that, I would support having five men on all three shifts. We should not willingly risk the failure of these levies. Because as we all know, it's about the safety of our residents, not an adjustment in wages. So the question is, how are we going to achieve the goal of five men on all three shifts? How are we going to pay for it? I have two proposals. First, regarding our income tax levy. Instead of asking for an increase of the tax rate from 2% to 2.5% and an increase of our credit limit from 1.1 to 1.65%, I'm going to ask council to consider only increasing the credit limit to 1.6%. This will generate more money than we had anticipated, which we can dedicate to pay fire department wages during our financial crisis. Unfortunately, here's one of the problems. It will take away the 5.5% decrease in income tax paid by 80 to 85% of our wage-earning residents and put the levies passage more at risk. I would hope the residents will understand, and with your help, we can overcome this bump in the road. Secondly, collective bargaining negotiations are coming up. I believe that the fire department truly cares about our city and our residents and understands the magnitude of the financial crisis in front of us. The sacrifices this department will have, the sacrifices this department will have to make in order to keep five-man staffing on all three shifts is unknown at this time. If we move forward with these two new proposals, the city will save $150,000 projected in fire department expense and we can keep the staffing level at five men on all three shifts. This would be a win-win for everyone. And I believe that is all we have tonight. So with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. A second? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Fondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukro?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traifus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.